I would like to call our Board of Education meeting to order. This evening, our meeting is a very special meeting. It's the night when we honor the top ten graduates of the senior class. And we are going to be doing that in a few minutes, but first, those ladies are going to come up and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So ladies, come on up. Right here, right in front of you. Turn around so the TV camera can see you. Just over there. I'm going to do quick introductions. We have Amanda Gore, Lucy Evans, Nicole Ryan, Rachel Regoli, Amy Team, and Amanda Jobe. Okay? At this time, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Next is our mission statement. Sarah?
At each community school, we provide quality education and empower students to be successful in their work.
I will call Chris.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Ian.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
Next motion would be in order to approve the revised agenda that is in front of us as presented. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Now, we're going to move on. We have every month, every meeting.
A true blue moment. It's where we recognize great things that are happening within the district.
Will the consent agenda?
Oh, see, I just want to acknowledge the ladies so bad. Okay, how about, how about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
Just on the consent agenda, we have two resignations. One was effective back in September, June, and end of the middle school coach for cheer. And then, an upcoming resignation dated June 10, 2017, for adjusting a capital year teacher.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now, on to the ladies. We have the pleasure tonight of honoring our top ten. And I am so excited to be able to say, power to the women of the class of 2017, because it's all women. These are an amazing group of individuals whose grade point averages range from 3.926 to 4.15. And they are individuals that are involved in many different things. And Mrs. Michonne will be speaking about that when it comes time for her to do the presentation. But on behalf of the Board of Education, we congratulate you. We honor you for your hard work. It takes a lot of dedication to get to the point that you got in your high school career. And we are very excited for what's going to be happening in your future. And we wish you nothing but the best of luck in everything that you seek to do. And we'd also like to take a moment, if we could have the parents of our top ten, if we could have you stand up, please. On behalf of the Board of Education, we want to thank you, because I am, and the Board, we are firm believers, that great kids and great students start at home. And if they don't have the support from their parents, it's hard to fulfill their dreams and to do great things in school and out of school. So we thank you for the sacrifices that you've made for your children, whether this be your oldest is graduating, your youngest child, or somewhere in the middle. You've done a tremendous job, and we honor you this evening as well. So thank you.
Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Michonne.
Good evening. She stole my thunder, because I was going to have the parents stand when we introduce the students, so.
We could still do that.
We wanted to acknowledge. We could do that. We'll have them come up with them when they are announced. How's that? Okay, so, at the high school here, we would like to announce our top ten students. As long as the thing works. There we go. We're going to start with Lucy Evans. If Lucy could please come forward, please, with her mom and dad. Lucy has a 4.27 GPA. She will be attending Western Michigan University in the field of study of paper engineering. And her parents are Chris and Lucy Ann Evans of Lenox Township. And there is a degree in paper engineering. Just want to let you know. Do you want to stand behind her? I actually looked it up, because I wanted to see what it was all about. Okay, this is Alyssa Gall. Mom and dad here?
She came straight from soccer.
Oh, she came straight from soccer, so she's on her own tonight. She has a GPA of 4.077. She'll be going to Alma College to study majoring in business and journalism. And her parents are Andrew and Susan Gall of Richmond Township. Our next student is Amanda Gore, and her mom and dad are here. Her GPA is a 4.150. She will be attending Michigan State University in the field of neuropsychology. And her parents are Linda Gore and Donna Gore, both from Richmond.
Now, stay up here, mom and dad. Stay up.
Our next student is Amanda Jobe. Amanda's here. Here comes mom and dad. Amanda has a GPA of a 3.959. She'll be attending Grand Valley State University in the fall in pre-pharmacy. And her parents are Greg and Beth Jobe of Richmond Township. Our next student is Rachel Catherine McKernan. Think she is not with us this evening, but we still would like to honor her. She has a 3.940 GPA. She will be doing one year at the Michigan Army National Guard, and then, the following year, she'll be going to Central Michigan University. She's majoring in physician assistant program. And her parents are Kevin and Jody McKernan of Richmond. Our next student, I also think she couldn't make it tonight, is Lauren Nicolopoulos. Lauren has a 3.926 GPA. She'll be attending Grand Valley State University in athletic training. And her parents are Constantine and Monica Nicolopoulos from Columbus Township. Our next student is Nicholas Nicholas. Wow, I am sorry. Nicole Ryan. Her mom and dad are here. She has a GPA of a 4.105. She'll be attending Saginaw Valley State University, studying math and science. And her parents are John and Linda Ryan of Lenox Township. Our next student is Rachel Regoli. Rachel has a 4.084 GPA. She will be attending the University of Michigan, studying biochemistry. And her parents are Matt and Kathy Regoli of Columbus Township. Our next student is Lydia Shadi. She has a 3.963 GPA. She'll be attending Michigan State University, studying medical, in the medical field with focus on biology. Her parents are Mike Shadi and Allison Valentine Shadi, from Richmond, and Cory and Tammy Shivers from Columbus Township. And our last student is Amy Team. Amy has a 3.968. She'll be attending Lawrence Technological University, studying engineering. And her parents are Stephen Kelly Team of Columbus Township. And that's our top ten for Richmond High School this year. I'll make sure they get those. Yeah, yeah, that's what I'll probably have to do. I hope so.
Our next true blue moment, we had students take a trip to Spain, and Ms. Mala is here. She's going to tell us all about it. Ms. Wolf, are you coming up too?
Me too.
Okay. We're going to make this very jealous of it.
Well, I remember standing here, asking for your approval of this trip, and it seemed so long ago, and it seemed so long ago that we were here. First off, it had been fifteen years since I had taken a trip abroad like this, and I didn't recall the, how fast-paced and hectic these trips could be, until I did it again this time. And when I was able to get home that Saturday evening, after everything was said and done, I was able to reflect back on that whole experience and how valuable it was, not just for the students here at Richmond, but I also took my family. And my son and daughter just thoroughly enjoyed it. I have a thirteen-year-old son who hemmed and hawed and did not want to go to Spain, because he got invited to go to Florida for some spring break thing. And I said, "You're going with me." And, you know, on the trip, for me, the great moment, aside from seeing my students' eyes light up, was bonding with him and him actually leaning over and saying to me on the bus, "This is cool, mom." And, you know, maybe he'll never go back there, but at least I can say, "You've been." And I hope that the students have the same impression as my student, or my two at home. And I got a really nice disc from Mrs. Kazmerzak. She was one of the parents that attended the trip. And it goes in order of the whirlwind trip we had. We did seven cities in pretty much seven days, because two of our days were flying there and back, so we had no time to breathe, more or less. We were up early, down late, go, go, go. Very fast-paced experience, but very well worth the trip. I'm just going to share some brief pictures with you. And these students here are standing below the Hotel Ibiza, which is a chain hotel there in Spain. We stayed in quite a few of those in the cities we visited, and they were very nice. They reminded me kind of of a Hampton Inn, or something similar to that respect, and better than I expected, to be honest. And she just gave us some idea of what the city layout looked like from our view from the hotel.
We landed in Madrid. We started in Madrid. Spent a couple of days.
And our first night here in Madrid is what you're seeing as we landed. It was beautiful day that day, lots of sunshine, and they don't look too tired, but believe me, we were. She took advantage of some of the sights that we would see here at home, but however, here in Spanish, so you'll see some of her pictures in that respect. Our first stop was the Museo del Prado, which is a world-renowned art museum in Madrid. It's the Louvre of Madrid, so to speak, or of Spain. Some of the most famous artists in the world have their works there. And we spent a couple hours, just having some free time, able to look at all the valuable paintings that were there. And she pointed out here in one of her images, this is the heart of Madrid. If you ever get lost in the city, go here. This is the center of the city. This is the bear and the madronio tree, and it's the national symbol of Spain or Madrid. And we were in the heart of Madrid here, the Plaza Mayor, very, very crowded. It's kind of like, if I could compare it to something, the Times Square of Madrid. It's hectic, lots of busy, 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 busy time of day, lots of people. And she pointed out there was a mariachi band playing in Spain. This was breakfast in our hotel, very nice breakfast daily. I was very pleased by the breakfasts, lots to choose from, and I missed it when I got home. And I'm not a breakfast person. We visited the bull ring in Madrid, and the kids were able to not go inside it, but at least see the outside and where people gather for the bull fights. And just kind of breezing through some of these. This is the palace grounds of the royal palace in Madrid. And you'll see in behind the girls there, an image of the palace. Again, a beautiful day, lots of smiles. This is the Temple of the Bod, an Egyptian relic within the city. It's kind of a unique landmark, because of the fact that it's Egyptian. And just the cityscape, the plaza, or the palace, rather. Do you know who that is? Literature people? No takers. Don Quijote.
Oh, I did say it under my breath.
And. They are symbolic of Spain, in that Don Quijote was written by Cervantes, a Spanish author, and his, they are, their statues are all over the place, but this is one that we were able to see. Lots of touring, of course. This is the plaza, or the royal palace, rather, the palace grounds. We were inside, waiting to have our tour of inside the palace. And there's the stairs that lead up to the palace tour, very grand, of course. Just so many great things to share. The view of Toledo, one of our second stops, beautiful sunny day. That, to me, was an amazing part of the trip, just the landscape. This was a cathedral visit we had in Toledo.
When we left Detroit, it was rainy, miserable, cold. So arriving in Spain, where it was in the seventies, sunny, and all of the trees had all of the leaves and the foliage was everywhere, it was dreamy.
This was the royal, the Alcasar in Segovia, one of our stops. I don't know if she has a outside view of it, but we had a group photo on the outside. Lots of group photo. Oh, the Aqueductos of Segovia. Unique thing about these is this was once the water system in Segovia, Spain. And it's built in that there's no mortar, and these, nothing holding these bricks together other than keystones. And this thing still stands today, which is amazing. I don't know how many years old is it?
Two thousand, over two thousand years old. Still standing, and it still technically works. Water is carried, and it was made at such a tiny slope that the water can be carried from the fields where there's water down to the people, so.
And this is in Segovia. This is the condo we stayed in while we were in. No, this is the Alcasar, which is an Arabic word for castle. And to be honest with you, there's really nothing inside, a whole lot to see, other than a lot of walls and different rooms that are.
Knight's armor.
Slightly decorated, but I learned, and I didn't know this before, that a castle is for guarding and protecting, where a palace is for grandeur, to show off what you have and own. So the castles are not as decorated as you would think. The palaces are very ornate, very gaudy.
And this one is also rumored to be the inspiration behind Sleeping Beauty.
Yes.
Disney saw it for Sleeping Beauty. And there's a mountain, what's interesting, unfortunately, doesn't seem like she got, oh, there it is. This is a mountain. Maybe the next picture will have a clearer view, but if you look at it, at certain areas, it looks like a woman sleeping.
That's right, yes.
You can see her profile.
Yes.
So it's the real Sleeping Beauty. Please.
You know, and the kids got a taste of a different culture altogether in other ways. What we're standing at right there is a public restroom. And you pay to get into it, if I recall, or no.
This one was free, but usually you do pay.
And you wait, and as you wait to go in, you have to wait for it to be cleaned. It sanitizes the whole thing by spraying the room itself. So you walk in, and the flooring is wet, because you have to wait for it to be sanitized. And that was unique, something you don't see here.
No toilet paper.
No toilet paper? The cathedral in, where were we here? Help me out.
That looks like.
That's Toledo.
Burgos.
Oh, Burgos, yeah. Oh! This was very interesting. Now, we're in Bilbao. The city in which is, was not, once known for industry, and it still is, but they've really cleaned up the city, because they've built the Guggenheim Museum there. And the Guggenheim, a New York designer, put that in place there. And this was something they put there as the opening of the museum, and it's a dog made entirely out of flowers. Well, the people of Spain liked it so well that they've kept it in place, and they annually water it and replant and keep it up. It's pretty, pretty massive. And these were some street performers, which you often see.
And our kids were just enamored with them.
And outside of the Guggenheim, these are various sculptures. These are tulips you're looking at. Guggenheim is modern, a lot of modern art. This is a spider.
And Bilbao is in the País Vasco, the Basque Country, which up until the past twenty years, was really off limits to a lot of Spaniards and also American, or any other nationality, because of a lot of fighting that was going on. And so now, they have put down their arms, and it's full-on total peace.
And during our free time, the students were able to go off with different groups, adults and ourselves, if they chose to, and explore. Go eat in a café, go eat in a restaurant that you wouldn't normally try at home. Try and speak the language, order things you wouldn't eat here, or eat here in the States. And a lot of them took advantage of that and did very well.
Lot of shopping, too.
Yes.
Lots of shopping.
Our day in Bilbao was, we had about three hours free time. They were able to do some heavy-duty shopping. The only thing we ran into is siesta. Some businesses recognize siesta, where they close down for lunch, so you might not get an opportunity to shop there, but your bigger stores, your department stores, were open. We did not go without.
Siesta, how long? Nope.
Two to five, usual.
I was trying to get a good, this is one of my favorite spots, San Sebastian is.
There's our wonderful Mrs. Mala.
On the Mediterranean, and can't say enough beautiful things about San Sebastian. That's one spot I want to get back to, and just stay for a week on the beach.
That's Turtle Island.
There is an amusement park there, because in the summer, it's a beachy town. You have a lot there for families and children, so she was taking a picture of the haunted house, Casa del Terror. And you had to take a funicular to get up to the site you saw us standing at. It's the trolley we took up the hill to get into the portion of the city we were standing from. Just beautiful, 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 beautiful.
And there was a race going on that day.
Yeah.
One of the preliminary races for the Tour de France. So we were able to see some of that going on. Oh, and that beautiful lovely man right there is David. He was our tour guide, and all of our beautiful little amigos fell head over heels in love with him.
Yeah.
And he was perfectly fluent, and he was from Catalan, from Barcelona, so he spoke Catalan, Spanish, and English, as well as he had been living in China for a while, so he had Mandarin. And there was something else in there, too, where it was just, you know, I speak two languages, and that's enough to make my brain go crazy, so.
Impressive guy. He was, he was great. And I'll take you to our le, oh. Sibling love there. Those are my two. That was in San Sebastian. Our last stop was Bilbao, or, I'm sorry, Barcelona. And we also visited where the bulls run, in Pamplona. He was explaining the route to us here, that the bulls actually take. And that was fun to see through the city streets. Those little signs represent the bull race, or run, rather. And Ernest Hemingway wrote a lot in Spain. He, that was his favorite, one of his favorite spots in the world, and he's well-recognized there.
Especially in, in Pamplona, yeah.
Oh, Parque Galguel is in Barcelona, and Antonio Gaudí created this park. He had a vision, that he wanted to create a little area for the wealthy. And he built this park and homes in the area, that he had hoped would strictly bring the wealthy people to the city in this area, and people didn't like him, didn't like his work too much. But his work has stayed, and you can see it's widely visited. These are actually benches, all made out of tiles.
And what's cool is that they are ergonomically correct. So if you sit on them, you're sitting comfortably.
There you are, girls. I wanted to show them the.
While we were in Barcelona, we visited the outside of La Sagrada Familia, one of the most famous cathedrals that is still under construction. And unfortunately, because Easter was coming up, we weren't able to get any tickets, because they were all booked up and had been for weeks, months. But one of the things that we were able to do, was like a little extra, was we went on a bike tour of Barcelona.
Yes.
So we got separated into two groups and took some bikes, and got to see a lot of different places, as well as make it to the Mediterranean Sea, and put our feet in the ocean for a minute.
And our last night in Barcelona, we had dinner near the area where all the cruise ships come in, so that was interesting to see, and it's a beautiful spot. A lot of this was put in place for the Olympics that were there, and so they really built up that area of the city. And that's the night, night scape from the view of Barcelona in the water. So, kind of breezing through the pictures, just to show you some quick images, but I had two travelers with us tonight. I had hoped they'd share their experience with you, other than me giving my two cents. So Amanda and Emily, if you want to come up and share what you thought, and would you do it again?
Favorites?
Favorites?
I personally can't say enough good things about Spain. It was a truly once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for me. And I took Spanish III, and I wasn't able to continue because of schedule conflicts with my Spanish, but I was able to kind of incorporate the Spanish that I had learned into the real world kind of thing. So going to a country where, you know, the little shop owners, none of them spoke English a lot of the time, and so you had kind of had to find different ways to communicate with the Spanish already knew, and the little English they knew, and it was really interesting to just communicate and use my Spanish through that, and then also see the different kind of cultures and architecture and climates of Spain. So it was, it was a great trip. I would definitely do it again.
Yeah, I liked it, because, like she said, I was able to apply myself in like what I learned in my Spanish classes to everyday life there. I also liked how I was able to see the different architecture, and each city that we went to, each place was different from the one that we went to before. And it was nice, because neither of my parents were there, so I was able to go with my sister and people that I had never met before, and we were just able to all get along in a new country, and just kind of find our way around, and it was really nice.
Very memorable.
On our very last night, I was walking with the tour guide and the whole, all thirty of us, trying to get back to our hotel. And he had just mentioned that this was his first trip for this year, but it was only a second year doing these kinds of tour guides. And he was explaining that this group of students and this group of people, this huge giant group that we had, he was so impressed with how mature everybody was, how open-minded they were, and I just. And I just felt like, oh, well, that's, that's just Richmond. That's just how our people are.
Yeah.
So I was really, I know that we made a really good impression on Spain, and Spain made a really good impression on our people.
Thank you.
So thank you for approving.
Thank you so much for taking our students. Okay, I'm going to put my glasses on, so I do this right. Next, I am looking for a motion to go into closed session for a student discipline hearing for student zero five zero eight one seven C. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are going to go into closed session for the hearing.